Good evening, everyone. It's seven o'clock. We'll call this October seventh, two thousand and nineteen meeting to order. Our first order of business is our invocation. Pastor Dan Baier with Saint Louis United Methodist Church is here in the audience, I hope. And he's gonna lead us in the invocation, and then we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would, please stand.
Welcome, sir. Thank you for doing this.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am. But I pray... Gracious God, we are thankful for this day and for this time to be together. We know that you have given us two commands to follow you, and some that seem so easy, but some can be so difficult, that one being to love our neighbors. And Lord, for this time together, we just pray tonight that we can truly love each other and love us, love one another, to do no harm, to do good for each other, to do good for this community and for the people of Goldsboro, and to truly stay in love with your laws and your ways for each other. So just bless this time together. Bless each council member and all those who are presented tonight. And just let us have a wonderful and gathering time of fellowship and meeting. For this, we ask and pray in the name of the Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir.
Our Pledge of Allegiance.
...........................
Thank you. May be seen it.
Next, we have roll call.
Mayor Allen.
Here.
Councilwoman Broadway.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Foster.
President.
Councilmember Haynes.
Here.
Councilmember Ray.
Here.
All right, we're all here. Next, we have approval minutes of the work session and regular meeting of August five, two thousand and nineteen for adoption.
Move to adopt.
Second. Any discussion? All players raise your right hand. Close likewise. The minutes are approved. Next, we have presentation. We have none. Next, we have public comment period. This is the time anybody else tonight can come and speak up to three minutes. We ask that you don't pollute, you don't electioneer, or things like that, but if you want to talk about something in Goldsboro, then we're welcome to hear you. And you're gonna come first. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. I want to know still why you hired another city attorney, or why you had to hire another attorney. You can tell me, or you won't tell me. That's okay. I got a private investigator on it already, and he's already dug up some dirt on a couple of y'all up there.
All right.
The bearded wonder over there is one of them. You're the other.
All right.
But I'm gonna tell you something.
Yes, ma'am.
Every time I come up here, I leave you feeling like I wanna puke. And I came to the conclusion, every one of you up there, you two, those four sitting over there, you honest to God make me ashamed to be a white person.
I'm sorry.
Because you're nothing but garbage.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're not welcome.
All right. Well, you have a good night.
No, I'm not done yet.
Oh, okay. Well, you've got two minutes and nine seconds.
Yeah, I got two minutes. You've been cutting me off of my time every time I come up here.
We'd never do that.
Hold on, ma'am. You sit up there like that just like you do about everything else.
Okay.
And y'all need to get your act together and start doing stuff, instead of sitting up there wasting money, building a new damn beer hole every time you come up here. But like I said, I got my buddy investigating y'all. And whenever it comes to light, I'm gonna bring it up here and lay it out for every last one of you. You got that? You understand that?
Ma'am, I'm letting you have your minute and twenty-three seconds.
Do you understand that?
Down to a minute and twenty-two.
I'm asking you a question.
I'm not answering your questions, ma'am.
I didn't think you would.
Okay.
It just ain't much of a...
Okay.
I'm not good at cursing, ma'am.
Well, I appreciate that.
But God knows I want to.
Okay.
Y'all are nothing but... Councilman Williams and Councilman Foster, they're only two decent people y'all got up there.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
You're not welcome.
Would anybody else like to comment? Anybody else? All right, anybody? Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The majority of our councilmen do not want the city advisory boards and commissions to perform their primary responsibility, which is provide advice to city council from a citizen's perspective. The reason I say that is because council does not advocate or support the enforcement of boards and commissions attendance requirements under the ordinance. Council has established a policy that does not permit public comments in certain boards and commission meetings. Council does not seek advice from boards and commissions before making decisions on issues within the area of responsibility of the boards and commissions. In two thousand and eighteen, a city council majority voted to change our ordinance regarding the advisory boards and commissions. Those changes involved eliminating the requirement that boards and commissions report annually to city council. They also eliminated social, economic factors from consideration in the process of selecting new advisory board and commissioning members. Last month, I went to the Commission on Community Relations and Development Board meeting, and found that it was being held at a different location than where it was scheduled to be held. Instead of a meeting, there was a training program presented by the North Carolina Human Relations Commission. I learned there that when the ordinance was changed back in two thousand and eighteen, council wrongfully merged the Commission on Community Affairs with the Committee on Community Development, and formed the Commission on Community Relations and Development. It was wrongful because the Committee on Community Affairs and the Committee on Community Developments have separate and distinct responsibilities and reporting standards. When council decided to merge the two boards, they directed the city attorney to draft an ordinance for that purpose. In the course of drafting that ordinance, the city attorney apparently did not research the old ordinance to see, and see that he did not advise council that it would be inappropriate to merge the two boards. To correct the conflict of interest, the city must now undo the wrong that was done when the ordinance was changed. And we, the people, have to pay more legal expenses for the ordinance change. As a taxpayer, I'm not happy with my representative on city council and those who voted with him to approve the changes. I'll be considering this when I decide who will get my votes in the upcoming election, and I hope other voters will do the same.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Would anybody else like to speak? Anybody else?
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
I would like to introduce you to some of my friends. On the latter part of June, this person, Major Michael Hawkins, accepted the position of the fourth squad, contracting squadron at Seymour Johnson Air Force Base, and since then, we've been working on building relationships. So, Major.
Yes, sir. Yeah, hey, just wanted to come in, appreciate the chance to get to meet all you guys, and introduce a couple of members of my team, Mr. Tisha Poindexter, Mr. Ronnie Mayo, longtime citizens of Goldsboro and working on the base here. So, proud to be a member of this community, and looking forward to the great things that you guys and us on the base can accomplish together. Thanks.
Appreciate you coming in, appreciate you coming in.
Thank you for coming. Thank you for what you do.
Mr. Wright, I have to hear from you. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. For those that don't know me, my name is Charles Wright. I'd like to talk to the council about three particular concerns I have tonight, and I would take any questions or comments you have at the end of that. First thing I'd like to do is address a video recording of July fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen. It was made by... I was included, but the strange thing about that video recording is when it came on, it was near the end of my presentation. There was nothing about you, Mr. Mayor, hitting your hammer. There was no pledge of allegiance. All that part of the recording was just absent. And it started with Charles Wright passing some envelopes to the clerk and asking you if you have any questions. So even when it started, I only had about ten seconds of my presentation, hardly enough so anybody at home would know what I was even talking about. And this is not the first time this happened. We have to have some quality control on the video recording. Now, and so far, that is so far as the video recording. The next thing is the public hearing notes. On the public hearing notes, on June seventeenth, I spoke for twenty-five minutes. That has to do with the Community Development Block Grant. I spoke for twenty-five minutes, and I got, I got twelve words. Twelve words in the written record for my twenty-five minutes of speaking. Conversely, our public hearing on April fifteenth, a Mr. Trey Taylor, whose attorney representing JBA Properties, spoke for six minutes. And he had got six hundred words in the written record. He talked for six minutes, got six hundred words. Mr. Wright talked for twenty-five minutes and got twelve words. And what's so bad about Mr. Mayor, Mayor Allen opened the public hearing and the following people spoke, that's ten words right there, just with the introduction. All I got was two more words more than you. And last thing I want to discuss, which was very misleading, and I felt very bad about when, it concerns the Essential Single Family Rehabilitation Loan Pool. This is a loan pool for people whose houses... And when I called, I find out there was a, there was a bid that went out May the sixth. It ended May the sixteenth, and it sat and sat and sat and sat until I called up last month on September fourteenth and asked about that. And all finance can tell me was that they received a bid on April sixth for one bidder, and nothing was done with it, absolutely nothing, and that's pathetic. Five months to today has gone by, and those people just sat and wait for a bid or to hear something when their house is gonna get repaired.
Thank you, sir.
And my time is up.
I have a question for you, Mr. Wright.
You're good.
What do you suggest as far as the minutes? Because I've also had some questions about the minutes myself. Seems like a lot of times I'm picking and choosing what we put in the minutes. There's times that I speak and everything that's said is not in the minutes as well and others, so it's like you're kind of sort of picking and choosing what goes in the minutes. What do you suggest?
I would like to see everybody, if you're gonna use verbatim every word that some people get up and speak. Mine is twenty-four words. I listened to the voice tape about... So it's twenty-four words missing that Mr. Trey Taylor actually said, but those were taken out. There was a little bit of humor in those remarks. But if you're gonna do, just be the same to everybody. If you're gonna give, if you're gonna have a public hearing, give everybody in print what everybody says. So if some... Now, granted, I spoke for twenty-five minutes. That might be three pages. This person spoke for six minutes. He got seven hundred words. But at the very least, you should put enough in the minutes so that somebody who picks it up a year from now, a month from now, will understand what Mr. Wright talking about. And it should be a standard by, set by the city council or by our new city manager to say, here's how our minutes is gonna be run. Here's how our minutes are gonna be recorded. So especially in the public hearings, it should be a standard. You shouldn't have one person getting twelve words and another person getting six hundred words. That shouldn't happen. That shows a direct... You know, I don't wanna pass any disparities, but no message came about with Charles Wright passed out a handout concerning changes to the action plan. That's all it said. Charles Wright passed out a handout. And I spoke for twenty-five minutes, so somebody looking at these minutes saying, oh, Charles Wright passed out a handout. That was nice of him. You know, what does it tell? So the minutes should be tried to reflect what somebody honestly tried, the message they're trying to convey. And that's the least... And if you can look at that, any of you councilmen can look at this six months from now and tell me what did Charles Wright do other than pass out a pamphlet? And that was very important because at that time, I bought three hundred and fifty, three hundred and seventy-five comment sheets that I got from about five different churches and presented them. And that was the main key that I wanted to bring up because I came back, and so my suggestion would be definitely to have fair play here. And if, and the time is very long too. It's three months sometimes before the public minutes shows up on the website. So if that particular section is overworked, let's hire somebody to help form the minutes and help make lengthy minutes or help reflect what people up here at the podium. But this, I'm not by myself on this, but these are two of the grossest examples I was able to find just in this year, where some people get up and talk, and everything they say is recorded, and other people get up and talk, and it's just a bare minimum.
The Essential Single Family, you stated May sixth is when... We waited since May sixth to get any movement on that project?
Well, I'm not saying this. My friend, Mr. Google, is saying that. All I did was Google Essential Single Family Grant, and on the second page, it gives the city of Goldsboro an informal bid. And by the way, it says twenty nineteen zero zero six. I noticed on your consent agenda item F, you had twenty eighteen zero zero six. But according to Mr. Google in this bid, informal bid has a number of twenty nineteen zero zero six. It gives the name of the five properties that was in question, and one of the people that lived at those properties came to me because I helped them fill out that grant and said, Mr. Wright, what is going on? Every time I call the city, they just say it takes a little time. It takes more time. Just be patient. And here, when I looked at this, it said the bid went out on May the sixth, and it was, it expires on May sixteenth at ten a.m. on, on before Thursday, ten a.m. on May sixteenth. That's five months ago, almost. And I wanted, I called this finance and said, well, what has happened with this bid? And Miss Nona in finance says, well, Mr. Wright, I don't know. We got a bid back. We only got one bid back, and nothing's been done with it. So sat and sat and sat and financed, and nobody bothered about saying, whoever wrote the, put the bid in, say, hey, you got something here you need to deal with. And when we look at this, this is the thing. These are people whose homes was flooded in Hurricane Matthew in two thousand and sixteen. And I look around the city, and we built the school. We built the soccer complex. We built the convention center. We built all kinds of things downtown. And here, these people can't even get twenty-two thousand dollars or twelve thousand dollars worth of home repairs because the bid, that one bid, was just sitting on somebody's desk or somewhere for five months without any action. And at the very least, I told them they need to go to the city council and tell the city council, we got one bid, and we need to take that bid and fix these people's houses today, if not tomorrow. And hopefully, you did that in your work session. I wasn't here to hear it, but I feel very strong about that, and if you hear how strong I hear about, feel about it, is because I came to this council three times, long before you was here, Mr. Manager, City Manager. Long, way back, I looked at my notes, way back in two thousand and eighteen, I came and said, we need to have a town hall. We need to have a meeting. We need to have, bring the people together so we can, the people can know where we are with these grants. We had a Community Development Block Grant, Disaster Recovery. We had a Essential Single Family Grant. We had a Urgent Repair Program. So we had all kinds of grants, and we still do. But you seem, you just didn't seem to wanna address it, and I came back a second time. And then I came back, like, second time was in December, two thousand and eighteen, and I've come back one time since then. And you just kind of look at me like I'm from outer space, or Charles Wright is just making these things up. I come to you, gentlemen, because I see these things, and I read, and I go on the internet, and I talk to contractors, and I talk to the people who wrote these grants. And we've just been moving along at a snail, snail's pace when it comes to these grants to fix people's homes. And I don't know why do we do that? If it was for downtown, it would've been done in five months. Let's wait before, to do something with a bid for five months. So that's why, I didn't mean to get off topic, but I feel very strong with these grants 'cause a lot of these people, I sat in their kitchens, and they cried, and I helped them fill out these grants. And it just bothers me that people can just let these people just by the bedside. They're not important. Nobody looked at it. And I just wish, I think the city can do better if they wanna do better, to be honest.
Well, I just wanna thank you for helping people fill out those applications and just giving up your time to do that. In regard to the July fifteenth video, Mr. City Manager, if we can find out what happened to that video, I'd greatly appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Would anybody else like to speak?
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You know, as I sit in the five o'clock work session, I sit here and I listen to other citizens come up here. I cannot help but to feel what Attorney White felt on July fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen, when he said, how can you trust this council with what they have done? And how can we trust you? We can't. We have a community affairs person who brags in the paper how she's suing the city, as well as suing Mr. Williams. And then, there's a closed session meeting. After that meeting, we see Councilman Hamm hugging her. We see Acoff. We see the mayor. All of you, like, this is a joke. That is disturbing. Within itself, you have her also on her pages saying, you should reelect the mayor. You should reelect Hamm. You should reelect Acoff. You should reelect Broadway. But she doesn't say reelect Williams or Foster. She has their opponents on there. Now, she's in violation because a couple of years ago, if you guys remember, you spent a whole bunch of money on talking to your employees, as well as directors, on proper etiquette. And directors are not supposed to influence the community. But here she is. She's also talking to the news articles again about this new case. So I wanna know, like I asked you the last time, how do you continue to allow her to not only play with the city, but play with us as citizens on our tax dollars?
I'll take a look at what you're talking about online and look into how it relates to our personal policy.
Okay. So when you find out that, and you are, 'cause it's evident, I can share it with you, when someone does violate the city ordinance, what's the next procedure?
It'll depend on what...
Is there an investigation?
It'll depend on what is actually happening, so...
Okay. So again, you have a city employee, a director, who is advocating for council members. How can she be... She's supposed to be unbiased. That's very biased, especially when in an election. And her job is to be out in the community, and she's advocating for you guys? That's a huge problem. And you're hugging her, and she's suing the city? Something's funny here. Something doesn't look right. And you know who picks up the tab? We do. Taxpayers.
Thank you, ma'am. Would anybody else like to speak? Anybody else? Hear it? Want to come and speak, sir?
Evelyn Paul, one oh two B, Mary Beth Place, Goldsboro. And I wasn't sure I was gonna say anything tonight, but as I was listening to what the lady before me said, I'm a retired educator, and I read the reports that were in the Argus that were filed. And I will just tell you this. If I was writing a report for a student of mine, and I described their behavior as unhinged, and that was the only thing I said, my principal would've called me in and said, you need to rewrite this. Because unhinged is not a describable behavior. The behavior would be threw a chair, kicked someone, used the word F-U-C-K, not unhinged. The fact that this city accepted at face value what was a poorly written report reflects very poorly on this, on this city. And sometimes I do say, I'm embarrassed as a resident to see that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Sir, you were gonna speak?
Good evening, sir.
How you doing?
Good evening.
I'm Henry Battle. I'm the owner of the Elks Lodge on James Street. I have a concern. And my concern is, I purchased a property in two thousand and six. And at the time in which I purchased the property in two thousand and six, when I was going through the closing process, I was notified that the city of Goldsboro has a lien on this property. Now, they told me it didn't have anything to do with me prior owner. Okay? I came before this board in two thousand and seven. Okay? Additional use, full ABC permits. I was denied. I come back, two thousand and eight. This time, I came back, full ABC permit, I mean, conditional use, no ABC permits. Now, the first time in seven, I went with ABC permits. The second time in eight, no ABC permits. Denied again. Now, my concern is, they got, they got two places here. One on James and Chestnut. You got one over here, the old, the carousel, pine and joes. Now, these people only been there approximately about thirteen weeks. Now, thirteen weeks. I've been thirteen years. Somehow, though, between the time that they've been there, these thirteen weeks, sanctions have been lifted, rules have been changed, everything then just completely turned around. I was here at the hearing they had on September twenty-third, and I'm listening to all of these rule changes. I was here for the planning on the thirtieth of September. It passed, so it's gonna pass tonight. Now, that's what my concern is. Now, when I came in two thousand and seven, I came in two thousand and eight, everybody on this panel was here, except for exceptional Foster and Williams. The only two that weren't here. Everybody else was here, so I'm sure you remember. Now, that's, that's my concern. Now, I'm gonna give you a heads up. October seventh, I came, I came down, I submitted my paperwork for additional use permit. Now, I'm gonna see how this gonna play out. Now, I don't, I don't been in torture chamber thirteen years. It's taking everything I have, everything I got, to maintain this thirteen years. Just try. Just try. Now, I'm here before you to ask, will you please take the choke hold? Usually when a choke holds a fly, you either submit, tap out, or pass out.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Battle?
Appreciate it.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
I just wanna apologize for your hardships. You know, any business that comes to Goldsboro should be assisted with any and all things that would make that business profitable, would enhance the city. And I know your family, you know, y'all have been here all your lives, and you deserve it. You deserve it. And I apologize that it's taken so long. We have to help you.
Sure would appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to speak? Seeing now, we'll close the public comment, and we'll move to consent agenda. Thank you for your coming.
Mayor and council members, consent agenda items B through N are presented for your approval.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve a consent agenda.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion?
I asked that item D and item G be removed, so we can discuss it a little bit further.
So moved, second?
Well, you can't do that 'cause there's already a motion to...
Well, you can't do that, 'cause there's already a motion and a second. So, you got, that's gotta get voted on first. Alright, gotcha. So, there's a motion and a second. Any more discussion on the consent agenda? And then the question, and I guess would be, we gotta vote on this motion, which is gonna mean your motion won't happen if it passes. So, the question to the council is, is you wanted to remove items what?
D and G.
D and E?
G.
D and G. Is, um, whoever made the motion and second, do you wanna, um, remove your motion and second, or you wanna keep it?
I'll remove my motion for, to discuss it, or to make a motion on D and G, sir.
Alright, will you fix your second, council member?
Yes.
Alright, so then, then you go ahead and make your motion.
I'll make a motion to, uh, remove item D and G.
I just a motion to remove item D and G, is there a second? Alright, uh, any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed likewise? What do we have?
Three, three. Motion, kick, motion, care.
Just, uh, that it doesn't get removed? If it's three, three, right?
I thought I'd give it, it's three, three, it's a tie.
The motion fails.
And the motion fails, so it doesn't get removed. Alright, so now is there a motion approved of the consent agenda?
I'll remake my motion to re- approve the, the, the agenda.
Is there a second? Second, any discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Allen?
Yes ma'am.
Mayor Clinton Bahner?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
No.
Councilmember Foster?
No.
Councilmember Ham?
Yes.
Councilmember Rehn?
Yes.
Alright, consent agenda passes, items requiring individual action, we have none. City manager report?
Sir, I'd just like to mention that, uh, we turned the water fountain downtown pink for Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and put a plug in for the fire department who is selling pink t-shirts for twenty dollars to raise money for the Southeastern Cancer Care Center. Thank you for that, that's it sir.
Alright, thanks sir.
Councilman Williams?
No comment.
Councilman Roy? I just have one, tomorrow is the, uh, final day of primary, uh, uh, for our primary election time. Just like to encourage everyone to come out and vote it. If you have not voted, then district's one and five.
Alright.
That's all I have, sir.
Alright. Councilmember Foster?
No comment.
Councilmember Ham?
No comment.
Councilmember, um...
No comment.
Alright, thank you everybody for coming, we stay on adjourned.